All right, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District for Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five, order at six oh three P M. In attendance, we have myself, trustee Laskowski, trustee Mack, treasurer Snoblen, attorney.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Chief Capesta and Chief Rick. And could please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Minutes, thank you for sending those out today. Bruce, any comments, questions?
Nope, I reviewed them earlier today.
Carl, anything you'd like to add? Your hands over the board.
No.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District on Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four.
Seconded.
And voiceful, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, chief report. I'll say, Chief Rick, you go first place since this is your first meeting.
It is, yes.
As chief.
That's right, so I know that there's a quick recap from December. That was something that Pete had put together as well, and it looks like again, between December and January, relatively consistent in that twenty call ballpark. I don't think there's been anything significant over the last two months that has happened within the district. Most of them, as normal, are rescue calls. So if there's anything that you guys would have questions about, obviously happy to make any notes and, you know, follow back up, especially for those that I wasn't necessarily close pretty too prior to January starting, but my guess is that most of them are pretty consistent. On the department level, obviously, we had a little bit of a changeover between myself and the meeting, but also promoted Deputy Chief Chris Roberts.
Oh.
Do you have any familiarity with him or not? But he's a guy that started probably just two or three years after me. We've kind of tracked ourselves along the way, and you know, he's kind of been right on my heels throughout our entire career, and was really just the right choice without any questions and hesitation on the way to be the guy to replace my position as deputy chief, and foresee he and I sticking together for quite a long time. I think both of us are at least ten to twelve years left with the department, and we'll be in our roles for quite a long time, and be able to, you know, set some consistency there and have some stability, which I think will be good for all of us. We definitely have a lot of, I think you guys know a lot of turnover, a lot of youth on the department, and I think some of that consistency and just creating some, you know, expectations off the gate and driving our department's long-term goals is going to be a really good spot for us to be, so we're excited about that. Four guys in med school right now, so we're getting closer to them being like the two-thirds mark, where they start to ride on the ambulance and do their, you know, their in-field medic time, but they're still obviously riding on shift, and you guys will still see them on calls as much as we can get them out. So, but we are, again, we're fully staffed with the E M Ts being there, but we're getting a little bit closer every to go month by month towards having a full roster of all pararetics and, you know, being back to where we really want to be, hopefully in the next six, eight months, so should be good.
Thank you. Quick question, do you have it off the tip of your tongue? There were a couple of anomalous response times. One was ten, one was twelve minutes, which is kind of a little bit on one end of the curve. Do you have any idea what happened here, Bruce?
Let me pull up, I think the twelve was twenty-five. So ours, well, yeah, so that was the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
So my understanding, again, the dispatch on scene at the ten thirty, when I see like the twelve fifty was, you know, that full response time. I'm not a hundred percent sure from a call type whether or not it was emergent or non-emergent. I'm honestly not a hundred percent sure on that one, I can definitely look it up. But I did see that crew as a really young crew, I did look into that a little bit. Some of it, I think, is, and we're even seeing this with the forest response times right now, we have a few that are, you know, are averages up a little bit on call response times, and I think we have a few more outliers as we go, and I think some of it is just familiarity with some younger crews and not being quite as familiar with districts. It's not, it's not a great thing to say, but as they get more time on the ambulance, we get, you know, better familiarity with what street names are and what's coming up next, you drive down the Waukegan Road.
Know the A O R.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, and I didn't expect you would, I just, those are the things that, if there's anybody in the district that asks me questions, that the people that actually watch this, those are the things that are.
Yeah, for sure. Just on that, I mean, if some of those do come up and there's stuff that, you know, you have specific questions about, I'm happy to take an email prior to this if there are a few things you guys have questions. I know it's nice to have this conversation too, but if any of you need to prep beforehand, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, and you know what, and then I probably shouldn't have known that with an easy answer.
No worries.
But.
Okay. To kind of build off of that, Norwood's kind of a, not very busy district, but it's a, it's a extremely, I would say, a lucky district just because you have two fire departments serving, right? And we, we help each other out a lot where those, those response times creep up big time when you have a mutual aid coming from, you know, and the district is so big square miles-wise, right? From like their station one to our station three, our, our calls, we try to limit that. We try to keep station three units in quarters, but all it takes is them to be out of quarters on a call, and then we either rely on Lake Forest or rely on one of our stations to cover that. It's very easy for those calls to creep up into the seven, eight, nine, ten minutes and stuff like that, which is unfortunate. I hate to see that, especially when these guys, they, they run to Norwood quite often. We run maybe one to five times a month, sometimes maybe a little less than ten. Right, that was very unusual, but conversely, we look at the mutual aid through the forest and we get a ten.
Yeah.
So we, we help each other quite often, which is, which is good. And we try our best to, to get to this point, eight square miles, you know, as, as quick as possible, just because, like you said, everyone's looking, right? All it takes is one question, why the hell would it take ten minutes to get to my house? Well, we're not in the stations all the time waiting for those calls.
And, and it almost always has, there've been a couple weird ones, but it almost always, and, you know, we're, we're on the back end of that super sensitivity that we had for several years. But, you know, there's, there's just things that happen. And yeah, if, if three is empty and one is empty and you're running from two, it gets a little harder, without a doubt. But those are the answers, and it's always good to be able to tell people, because I think that for the majority of folkses, some, you know, some certain, some personalities will never be happy no matter what. But for most of the folks that, that we come in contact with, I mean, they, they understand the realities of the situation. They just like to know.
And then some of those mutual aid calls, for example, there are two different dispatch centers right now. We're working on delays because the call was.
Well, that's, that's going to go away.
So.
At some point.
At some point, right. We're still, we're fighting for that, and we're coming to, going to dispatch, coming up here in the summertime, so actually, Norwood's going to benefit from that, because we'll both be on the same dispatch, which is good, right? So we thought we'd join the cool kids at Lake Forest, so.
It's a smart choice.
Long conversation, we had a couple months ago.
Yes.
I, I've got a couple more calls on that, by the way. Same question, and the good news is the answer is the same, and everybody goes with that.
Right. Well, for Liberty Gold, shared the December monthly, and actually, this time last month, I was in the parking lot, wondering why nobody was here, come to find out that, I realized we didn't have a meeting, so.
That was supposed to be you doing that, not you.
I know.
You're supposed to send me.
Because you're making me feel bad now. We went through that.
It was quite clear that there was not a meeting, right? So, but anyway, shared with you the, the January, and yes, there's two calls. One call, you know, it's a service call, my first call right there. Every year, I nicely, I've had a really good, like, professional relationship with her for many, many years. Her husband passed away, her before husband passed away. We personally went out there and checked their smoke detectors at their residence, and every year she calls me on the private, because she asks us to come and check the smoke detected areas. So that was that service call, my first call, who were there and changed all the batteries in her house. She's got a deep action inside of her, so it's always, it's fun to just keep those relationships. And she really appreciates that type of service, which is good. And, and then just another E M S call, that was a mutual aid call, that explains the response time being almost nine minutes just because of that call transfer. We do dissect these calls, I do, so to, like, thoroughly check with the dispatch directors, and that's not just to see where they're located, unfortunately, it's just the technologies don't speak together, and there's just a delay in actually physically calling the dispatch center and making it work. Same technology today, the bridge over, it's called a cat, it's bad, we're out, and it dumps the work in there. So I'm optimistic, I'm just trying to stay optimistic, so. I did, I was about to print out some performance measures, I have summer stats for twenty twenty-four, just for your, just so you could look at it, just so you know what the video has been up to in twenty twenty-four, it's got all our information. Did go to a, a fire and burn it, that was before this meeting, so I was unable to print them, so I'll just email them to you. So at your leisure, just go ahead and check those emails, and then next month if you have any questions, we can talk about it next month.
Did you say you sent that just as soon?
Yes, just before I walked in.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, because I just checked my emails as I walked in.
Yeah, and then we did.
Was five thirty-seven.
We did hire two of you guys, fortunately, they're both medics and they're both on shift already, which is great, so.
Wow, nice.
We're seeing, at least, we are seeing, we're going to turn around, Lake Forest doesn't, you guys don't require anything, right? Which is great, I.
This round, yeah.
Anybody.
We might change that to next go around, just because of where we're at.
We required E M T and basic ops firefighter, Lake Forest currently, which has got to be twenty-one for the fire process, right? And which is great, because so many people are doing their career suspension, are looking for clients. And Lake Forest, however, is very expensive, and it's a talent concern to train like from nothing to being a paramedic. That's two and a half years, right? So we're happy, we're, we're happy that we're able to hire two medics, great, good for that, and we're in for a staff cleanup, so hopefully that, you know, lasts for quite some time. And we scheduled pre-harvest for the next year or so, so it should be good to go. And then we also put a new engine at this, uh, station three in service, and we're happy with that as well, so.
Can I ask you something else? You can ask your chief's question, maybe. Can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
I just wanted to get a follow-up to some of the Santa, it sounded like everything was okay, but just want to make sure that from your guys' perspective, right? Yeah, the only thing that I heard was no candy, and that may have been, I blame Cos. And.
That's easy.
It's an easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because this year was a little bit different, so historically, I mean, I don't get too much, but historically, since the department closed, I've been saying, right, so I just went on, what about candy? I, I coordinated the appearance of Santa, sorry, Bruce. And then I bought the candy a couple years, we had some donations, but after that, I just put a bill on it. This year is a little bit different, because it wasn't, you know, neighbors reached out to, I think it was you, Chief Capesta, wrong?
Yeah, I mean, you were out of town too, right?
Yeah, and I was, and I was out of town.
He was out of town, we didn't get the email, because he's, you know, safe to sell work. And the good news is, it got taken care of.
Yeah, there was still Santa, so that was great, the whole candy thing, I guess, just okay. Minor, minors, but yeah, forward, you know, I've had plans on facilitating the appearance of Santa again. No problem, I had to reach out to me, I don't have anything else.
Just do all of this.
And, yeah. But I'm going to make sure that this came.
I did forget that this is the first time, we, that was the first time I had moved to do it for Santa.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's funny, the things that people remember, you know, like changing the battery and the Santa coming around, but that's also, I mean, we're a mountain district, so we have a luxury area, you know, we have that kind of affordable, our citizens, which is awesome. So this is one of those things, if I know, I would have, you know, run over, you know, with, you know, a bag of candy myself, dressed as a child, but that's okay. Uh, Norwood neighbors had no idea who we were, so I only knew that. So it's, this is, this is one of those things where, talking about local, you know.
And if anyone from the department, and while Santa's going on, you're a month's person, you're in Santa's suit, and you have the list from the, uh, uh, Norwood Bonfire Association, so I have possession of that, so that's, that's pretty used to. Sounds good. But yeah, outside of the candy, I didn't hear anything. I think, I think the only person that mentioned the candy to me was Cos.
Cause Cos wants the candy. Yeah, I think there was one kid that, you know, we, we got the special request, but it wasn't coordinated well, so.
Yeah, and those type of requests don't come often and are not that difficult to fulfill, but the logistics is a little bit, and that, that wasn't. But yeah, other than that, it happened, it, it, you know, Santa came through, that I think is the most important thing, is to keep that.
Exactly.
Certainly, I do appreciate all the departments working with us on that, so, thank you.
Minutes. Okay, moving on to agenda five, public comment. The district trustees allocate time to those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fire district trustees on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each person addressing the trustees is asked to limit their comments to a maximum of five points, any public comment?
So did we, did we ever figure out, so Joey went to the hospital?
She did, yeah, it sounds like she's recovering now, so, if she's at home or not, but.
Okay.
Got it taken care of, so.
She's our public commenter, so. Got to take care of her.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to six, attorneys report to the board of trustees.
Hi, folks, real quick, Chief Rick, I am not the typical attorney for the district, it's usually John Kelly. I just sit in for him when he has a conflict, you'll usually see John here. But two interesting pieces of legislation, welcome to the hundred and fourth General Assembly. All the bills of the hundred and third General Assembly have died, they may or may not be resurrected as the legislature sees fit. We'll see how it goes. One interesting piece of legislation, probably more for you guys, there is a piece of legislation that would drop the age from twenty-one to eighteen in order to go on the list for a fire department, kind of hopefully help recruiting, how that works with having an eighteen-year-old living in a firehouse ensures going to be interesting for human resources. The other one is, there is a bill, and this was introduced as well in the hundred and third General Assembly, but they resurrected it where you guys could have a quorum between in-person and remote members. And with a three-person board, if that legislature got passed, that would obviously be really, really helpful to you guys.
It would be good, with this board, maybe we use it, previous board would use it.
So there are two interesting pieces of legislation I've seen, there's a lot more out there, we'll see what actually comes along though. And that is all I have.
Regarding that eighteen to be on a list, is that eighteen to be on a list or eighteen to be hired?
I think it's eighteen to be hired, but don't.
Did we talk, is that the chief's?
Let me see if I got it.
We, we've heard that the legislation addresses to be on an eligibility register, however, you still have to be twenty-one to be officially hired, which those registers are usually good for two years, so it might benefit somebody at nineteen being on a list, and, you know, there are just.
Yeah, I mean, there's interesting hoops and a lot of, I think, the discussion that, I think without chief's meaning, but it has to do with like the pensions, and if you have a thirty-year guy that's only forty-eight and doesn't beat the fifty-year corner for pension.
Right.
Then what do you do? And I think they're trying to play the game back and forth of, well, we'll allow the eighteen-year-old, but you have to drop the, the age to collect on the forty-eight.
Or they're not collecting.
Something, yeah, it, it just, there's going to be way more hoops than just allowing an eighteen-year-old.
Yeah.
The opportunity to work for you, because there's so many goofy.
I saw it in passing, I didn't read it at this point, I generally don't read the bills, because.
I like me.
Yeah, stuff changes so much, so I don't know if it was on a list or to be hired, but that is a really good point.
All right, thank you. Carl, treasurer's report.
On the balance sheet, the checking account stands at six hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Reserve account, three hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Petty cash at eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, for total assets of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents. On the budget, we are nine months in, so that's three quarters of the year. Let's see, we've, we've.
What's that, Rob? What's that percentage?
Seventy-five percent.
Three quarters.
You were looking at that, I was looking at, I wanted to make sure I got the number right, three quarters.
Yeah, nine twelfths, three quarters, seventy-five percent, point seven five. I got it covered.
I just wanted, I'm writing it down, I wanted to make sure I got the number right. It's good to know that you're there, Rob.
Lots of ways that, that it can be expressed. Okay, so on the revenue side, we've got, you know, pretty much ninety-nine percent of our revenue. We've got fifty percent of what we budgeted for, for Nitis, because I built them for half the year. I'm sort of gathering up the bills for the second half. So, put that in. Well, the contract is paid off at a hundred percent at this point, for the rest of the year. Building maintenance and such is running around thirty-seven percent of budget, and administrative stuff is at twenty-six percent. Big chunk of that is the salaries when they get paid out at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year in May or in April. And then, as always, the insurance is, you know, like, nineteen-three percent of, it's a hundred percent paid off, so that's where we stand on the budget.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget tracking as presented by treasurer Snoblen.
Seconded.
All right, and roll call vote, trustee Mack.
Aye.
Trustee Laskowski.
Aye.
And trustee Donald. Outstanding invoices, Carl.
Okay, we have two months worth of them here, because we did not approve in January, so you'll see pretty much everything. Comcast, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, ComEd, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, Hudson Brits, not to be, um, yeah, eight hundred and ninety-two, because I think there's, there was a, there's eight hundred and fifty for the retainer, and I think it was a payment for the.
Publishing.
Publishing, exactly.
Yep.
Oh, and then, actually, Chicago Tribune has started billing us again, they told us they put, they had put us on a credit hole for some regatta for reasons, I don't know, because we never, you know, not paid them, but now they're, now they're willing to bill us again, so, two hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Is that, is that per publishing, or?
Per publishing, yeah.
Per, per?
That's all it is.
Okay.
Yeah, some stuff is really inexpensive, just like notices of, of meetings aren't expensive, but when we have to publish a report, then they get a little pricey.
Okay, so it's not like it's quarterly, not their.
Oh, no, no, it's per, I'm sorry, it's per, per a thing we have in.
That's actually cheap, because I just paid for something in Arizona, and it cost me eleven hundred bucks.
That's fine, I think the biggest one we ever had is, is well under five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, North Shore Gas, fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, I'll make a comment about that when we finish up. Intersecurity, that's the quarterly alarm monitoring, a hundred and twenty dollars. Lorenzo Sun Landscaping, that was lawn mowing for the entire last year, twenty-four times at twenty-five dollars, so we just got one annual growth in them. The Illinois Association of Fire Protection District, our annual dues, four hundred dollars. Again, second Hudson Brits for eight hundred and fifty, Comcast, two hundred and sixty-four, ComEd, five hundred and thirty-eight. Lake County Public Works, it's the water, twenty-eight dollars. City of Lake Forest, two payments, so that's a hundred and forty-one, one ninety-six. I just split it up, because I won't take anything over a hundred and twenty thousand. North Shore Water Reclamation Sewer, sixteen dollars, ComEd, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, Hudson Brits, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Comcast, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, Ireland Heating and Cooling, that was to fix the, the upstairs furnace, was giving us trouble, three hundred and ten dollars, and North Shore Gas for sixty dollars. I mentioned North Shore Gas, you noticed fifty dollars and sixty dollars and middle winter. I got a letter from them a few weeks ago saying that our meter had not changed in like three months. So they said either, but they just wanted to know, are you vacant, are you using alternative energy, or is your meter broken? Please let us know, so I called them up, they scheduled that I come out and look, and I did not hear back whether they replaced the meter or anything, but they sent us a, an estimated bill that looks like it's pretty darn close to what it should be, to get, to catch up, you know, to, to, to bring us up to really, what we really hope will be used. The person I talked to was, was very, was very nice, she said, you know, I just have to let you know, you may be shocked, you make it a really, really big bill. And so I said, it's okay, because we budgeted for it, so we didn't pay it, we slid the money in the budget to pay for it. So yeah, I did get the catch-up bill for about fifteen hundred dollars, which typically this time of year, the gas bill's going to be six, seven hundred dollars a month, they always. So that is it for the checks to approve.
Just a couple of questions, so the Hudson Brits is on here three times?
It's just the way that.
The way that it goes.
Well, no, it, it may be that, that I paid the, the first one on here, I paid right at the end of the period, and then the third one I paid at the, you know, beginning of the period, so it's just, it has to do with, when I pick up the mail, when I pay the bills. You'll, I think ComEd is on there three times too?
I missed that comment twice.
Yeah, it's, again, it's, it's just the, you know.
Timing.
Just timing.
Yeah. Yeah, that first bill for comment was three, just under three seventy, and then five forty, and then nine ninety.
Um, nine ninety's a little high, it was nine hundred.
Yeah, I gotta, you know.
Yeah.
I gotta say.
Did you go to the disco party?
Yeah, exactly. It has, it has, it has happened once or twice, and I will admit that I may have paid a bill late, and so the next bill has to twice, but I almost always catch that, did not pay it. But occasion, I know one time I did actually pay it, and then you just get a credit, so I'll look into that to see.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that, that is a lot, it does get very high in the winter time, because with the furnace, you know, the, the blowers running and, and all of that, now the air conditioning's much worse, but again, to keep the building warm in the summer and cold in winter.
Pretty much, I want the freezers on in summer. It's a sauna, it's all right.
Yeah, looking at the nine hundred, that may be.
Just want to double-check, it, it's not that huge of a deal, so I think it's still in line with the budget and everything, so yeah.
I get it, well, we'll, we'll get reimbursed for it.
Yes.
So it's legitimate, they used to.
I just wanted to bring it up, just because it stood out to me, so.
We saw that, just see it's leaking out of those broken outlets.
You gotta fix those.
Gotta fix those, yeah.
You got anything else, Chris, for Carl, any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the outstanding invoices in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents.
Seconded.
And roll call vote, trustee Mack.
Aye.
Trustee Laskowski.
Aye.
And trustee Donald. Going on to agenda nine, Bruce, you may have more info on this, because I got nothing. Discussion action on lease or sale of a Rockland Fire Protection District building and/or update regarding improvements.
I've heard literally none. Cause there's no money to be.
Yeah, Mr. Joseph, I said, I fell off the edge of your.
So there's, yeah, so, and, you know, again, new General Assembly, so. Can be a little while before they figure it between, before they take their, their initial budget, and then they start doing project reallocation, and they always try and do it in February so that when the thaw hits, they can get going, and then it'll work suddenly. It always happens in April, when there's this realization that it's construction season, so. At least that was what I got from my contact when I spoke with them in December, was that they didn't start to see anything for a while.
Fair enough. Agenda item ten, other items maybe likely brought before the board, the only thing I can comment on, can't talk over.
Uh, agenda item ten, other items, uh, maybe lost, we brought before the board, uh, the only thing they can comment on, um, can't talk about before is about the, the, for rescue forty four, rescue five fourteen, whatever is the boat, variable boat. I'll go ahead group, uh, both chiefs in on that email conversation, uh, with chief Marsh from Lake Bluff, and hopefully we can handle it down another home, or figure out what to do with it. Um, so to, you and Bruce and I did, uh, when the department was closed, uh, that acting board then donated the old inflatable boat, and it's a two thousand nine Mercury inflatable boat, to Lake Bluff. Um, and I guess either the title wasn't signed properly or at all, um, Lake Bluff has had it since then, so since two thousand eighteen. And now they don't want it anymore. So since they don't have the title in their name, they just wanna give us the boat back. Um, I emailed John about it, and John says, well, I mean, since it was, you know, never, I'll say, uh, transferred, you know, the title that, take it back, they don't want it. Um, so I asked chiefs, um, if they know of anyone that could use the boat, uh, assuming it's already been deemed surplus, since it was donated to Lake Bluff, um, I don't see an issue unless counsel advises me otherwise of passing it out to another governmental entity that could use it. Um, if nobody wants it, then we'll have to figure out what to do with that surplus district property.
As far as I'm concerned, once it's been surplus, you don't have to say where it's surplus to.
Okay.
So you guys should be, just with the understanding that you have no clue what happened with that boat over the last seven years.
Yeah.
Or what, like we loved it.
Yeah, we have no idea what condition it's in or what, so, uh, but yeah, I'm trying to get some pictures and find out if any other entity wants it. If they don't, then.
You could probably, yeah.
Yeah. But then, again, like Carl said, what's, what's it really gonna add us? We'll see.
What's the value on it?
Yeah, doesn't know what the value on it is, but what condition it's in, I don't know. It's gonna be a question for everyone that, you know, may reach out to government, so I'll try and get some info and we'll be getting it. Um, but that's all I have. That's the only thing that really popped up in my emails, um, was the boat.
Okay. Well, as it wasn't great, a grant.
Don't think so.
It's never, another animal.
Yeah, I mean, the ladder truck.
Yeah, that would.
That'll be funny.
Running.
I'm figuring that out.
I've been told.
Anything else, Bruce?
Nothing.
Um, Carl? Chiefs, anything else you have longer yet? No? Bueller? 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 No, I mean, nothing.
Okay. Uh, we'll make a motion to adjourn meeting at six thirty five P M.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Thank you, everybody.